Good evening and welcome to the twice monthly meeting of Westminster's mayor and common council. During the public health emergency, we will be conducting our meetings virtually, and they will be available and streamed live on the city's Facebook page, as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. We'll begin, as we do every meeting, with the pledge to the flag, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on the city's website. First, we'll consider the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the meeting of the mayor and council on October 26, 2020, and the closed meeting on the same date. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
All right, and is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the minutes are approved. Tonight, we have one item for a public hearing. Public hearings in the city of Westminster are led by the mayor, and so, Mr. Mayor, I will turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, we have a public hearing for ordinance number 927, and ordinance amending Chapter 164 zoning of the code of the city of Westminster, Article 9A, Historic District Zone, Section 164-51.3, Creation and Composition of Historic District Commission, Appointment and Term of Members, Vacancies to Alter the Terms and Composition of the Historic District Commission, and to Modify Its Powers. Mr. Depot?
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I'm actually going to have Andrew Gray do this report. He's been working closely with the Historic District Commission on these changes over the course of a year, if not more, so I'll leave it to him.
Thank you, Mr. Depot, and thank you, Mr. -- and thank you, Mayor Dominic. On September 28, 2020, the mayor and common council introduced proposed ordinance number 927. On October 8, 2020, your planning and zoning commission held a public hearing for ordinance number 927, and moved forward a recommendation of its approval to the mayor and common council. No revisions to proposed ordinance number 927, as introduced by the mayor and common council on September 28, 2020, were proposed by the commission or city staff. Staff recommends that the mayor and common council adopt ordinance 927, as provided in Attachment 1 of my staff report. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gray. So, can you, I guess, Mr. Gray, can you do us a favor and just run through the key changes in this, just so everybody has it fresh in their mind?
Absolutely, Mayor Dominic. Currently, the city code states that there are seven regular members of the historic -- of your Historic District Commission. This ordinance proposes five regular members and one alternate member. There's currently an alternate member on the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning and Zoning Commission. The second change would be reduce the number of commission members who must be residents of the city from four to three. The third change would be allow non-resident commission members to include commercial leaseholders maintaining a physical business presence within the city. Right now, currently, only owners of real property may be resident commission members. The fourth change would be to delete commission members' rights to accept and use gifts. And lastly, the fifth change would be add alternate commission member obligations.
All right, and, Mr. Gray, I have a question about this before we get too into it, but the way that B is worded, allowing non-resident commission members to include commercial leaseholders, is that saying that, like, if you're going to be a non-resident, do you -- must you be a leaseholder, a commercial leaseholder, or -- because the way it's worded, it almost sounds like it's unnecessary, because it says it's going to allow. Would that mean that if you're not a leaseholder, you're not allowed to be a non-resident?
If you are, you can be a non-resident, but you must have -- you must be lease space downtown, or, sorry, in the city. So, you can be a non-resident, but you must also be a leaseholder for property in the city.
Okay. Who said that? I didn't.
Mr. Mayor?
I am, Mr. President?
Thank you. As I read it, it says, be the owner of real property in the city, or be a commercial leaseholder, right? So, you could be one or the other.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to see, this says allow, so there are going to be no non-residents unless they have a lease?
Or own property.
Of course, of course. Yeah, own property, I understand. Okay.
I'm sorry, but initially, three of the members have to be residents of the city, and then, the remainder, they can either be residents of the city, or they can have owners of real property, or be commercial leaseholders. We've just really expanded that commercial leaseholder aspect. It was important for the Historic District Commission that we also open up to the actual businesses that work downtown. That would be the hope, that we'd get a downtown business owner to be part of these commissions as well.
Understood. I just wanted to clarify and make sure that anybody on the commission would be a stakeholder, one way or the other. So, that's, I just wanted to clarify that. The way it was worded, I just, I thought I knew what it meant. I wanted to make sure I knew what it meant. That's all. Thank you. Okay, does anybody on the council have any questions or comments about this? I know I didn't see anyone submit any suggested changes. I know we talked about that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Cavaci?
Yeah, again, I don't want to beat this dead horse, but your question was going to be exactly the same as mine. It's the same, exact question, but I just want to make sure we got a clear answer. You either have to own property to fill one of the three slots, or to fill one of the non-resident slots. The only way you can fill a non-resident slot is you have to be actively engaged in a business that leases space within the city, correct? There's no other way.
Or if you're the owner of real property in the city. So, you may own property in the city, but not live in that property.
Okay, understood. So, you own property, you are engaged in business activities that leases property, that's the only way you can fill those two non-resident slots, or conceivably, they could be filled with a resident, if that's, you know, what was going to take place, correct? There's no restriction against those slots being filled by a resident?
No, there's not. All five, all members of the HTC can be residents of the city. This allows non-residents, because as you --
Understood.
-- are trying to fill commissions can be somewhat difficult. And this broadens, it also broadens the number of people that would be interested in trying to get qualified people into the Historic District Commission.
No, I think that makes sense. Last question, Mr. Mayor. So, when it comes to the non-resident business leaseholder, doesn't own property, but they do business in the city and have a lease within property within the city, does it -- the way it's worded, does it say leaseholder, or someone involved in the business activities that the business holds a lease?
It says, "commercial leaseholders maintaining a physical business presence within the city."
Commercial leaseholders. Okay, I just want to make sure that, so, for example, a lot of companies will hold a lease within the city, but it's not held within an individual's name. It's held by the corporate entity that actually signs and holds the lease. So, it's not a person, and in, you know, in the eyes of the law, corporation is like a person. So, anyone, so where I'm getting at is, if you own, if you work at a business that is involved, that gives you some level of expertise, where it would make sense that you would be a good fit on that commission, but you aren't the owner of that business and didn't execute that lease, as long as you are employed by the company, you still can be on the commission. Is that correct?
I would say that that may not be correct. I think we're looking at the actual commercial leaseholder, the individual itself, maintaining a physical business presence within the city.
So, then we're going to exclude anybody who holds their lease that's in the name of the corporation? So, for instance, I lease my, I lease space from another company, happens to be my company, for my business. So, the lease that's held, now, I should, I'm a bad example, but there are companies that lease space, that it's not, it's not an individual that leases it. It's the corporation that leases it. So, I'm not, I know I'm sounding like I'm probably making this more difficult than it needs to be, but what I don't want to do is put us in a position where we can't put somebody on that's a good fit, because they're leasing their space in the name of their corporation, not as an individual. And that's very common in business.
I think Alyssa had --
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr.?
Who?
Ben, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, so, we could, if it were the will of the council, add a sentence that says, it says something to the effect of, "commercial leaseholder shall include the beneficial owner of a corporate own, corporate leaseholder," some words to that effect.
Ms. Levand, I think if we're going to do that, we need to state that that person needs to be a majority owner of that corporation. Yeah. Yeah.
I, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President?
I think Mr. Cavaci raises a good point, and perhaps, in the time between the end of this hearing, and when we take up the ordinance for discussion towards the end of the meeting, perhaps she can, she can figure out a sentence that will cover what Mr. Cavaci said, and, Mr. Mayor, you know, the thought that you expressed as well.
Yeah, I think we can go ahead and close out the hearing unless someone has something else to say.
I have one other question, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Mr. President?
Thank you, and so, and that is that, so, as I read this, this, it talks about being, you know, when it talks about appointments, this includes, this, well, put it this way, members of the commission will continue to be appointed in the way that they have been, right, which is that the mayor appoints and the council confirms, right?
Correct.
Right. Because it just, just references, you know, that they shall be appointed, and, yeah, it doesn't mention that, so I just thought I would check. All right, thank you, and that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Yingling, I think you tried to chime in a little while ago. Did you have something to say?
No, 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 don't worry about it. Sorry, my connection is, like, really unstable right now, so I'm going in and out.
Okay, all right. Does anybody else have anything, any comments or questions? We've beaten this horse, all right. So, I think, I think it's good, we'll go ahead and close out the public hearing, and we'll discuss the details of the ordinance later in the meeting. Mr. President, it's all yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll return now to the other business. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. We have one item on the consent calendar. We have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion by Mr. Dayhoff. Is there a second? And a second by Mr. Cavaci. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the consent calendar is approved. Now, we'll go to our report from the mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President, and tonight, I have no report. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move on now to our COVID-19 pandemic report. Ms. Matthews?
President Pecoraro, I'm going to ask Ms. Gruber to join me, if she can jump in here, but she and I had a discussion earlier this afternoon regarding the Recreation and Parks Department's planning for the reverse holiday parade. During that discussion, Ms. Gruber brought up a number of points that she had some concerns about regarding the viability of the event. I share the concerns that she raised with me, and we thought this might be a good opportunity to sort of brief the mayor and common council on where planning for that event stands, because we're sort of at a point this week where we need to make a decision whether we're going forward or we're not. Ms. Gruber?
Sure. To elaborate on some of the concerns, considerations, and challenges being discussed, first, our float and display count is only at 22 entries, and a considerable amount of staff time and some financial resources will need to be expended to develop additional visual content along the trail. Generally speaking, we see about 50-plus entries for the parade itself, and so, sitting at 22 entries, this is half of what we were anticipating. Moreover, with our float and display count lower than anticipated, if greater restrictions are put in place limiting the ability for some nonprofits to meet or gather, it's predicted we'll lose over half of the 22 entries that we have. So, that's a growing concern for us here. Second, our actual public engagement doesn't seem to be where it generally is at for this event, or events we've had in the past, the recent past. So, Facebook interest in this event is quite low. If we compare it to events that we had in September and November, currently, our Facebook statistics on the reverse parade show 342 people interested in the event, with only 64 people saying that they are going. And to give you some comparisons, in September, we had a drive-through build-your-own-scarecrow-kit pickup event, so you were just picking up supplies to build your own scarecrow. We had 714 people interested in that event, and 89 people said that they were going, and the result of that was a sellout event for us, with 200 build-your-own-scarecrow kits picked up, and a robust list of requests that we were unable to fill. Another example, just for comparison's sake, is our drive-through spooky Saturday event that recently happened. We had 2,800 people interested in that event. 300 people said that they were going, and the result, as we all know, we were overwhelmed with thousands of participants forcing us to turn people away. So, you can see that from those two events, the social media indicators were not brisk for those two events, but certainly, the turnout was overwhelming, but at least, it was greater than what we're seeing for the reverse holiday parade. Finally, along with those aforementioned factors, there is an abundance of concern among my staff that there's a potential for greater statewide restrictions that may ultimately eliminate our ability to hold this event. So, everybody is willing to put the additional work and resources into making this a fantastic community event, but it would be absolutely heartbreaking if it went the way the Celtic Cantor did, where we worked and worked and worked up until a point where we just had no choice and were unable to have it in the first place. So, I felt that it was prudent to bring our concerns to you this evening, during this meeting, to see if you had any thoughts or feelings on a direction that we should go. We do have to make a decision this week. If we are to make a decision this week, we effectively have about 10 working days to add additional content, and finally, it's all remaining logistics associated with this event, so.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gruber and Ms. Matthews. Sounds to me, you didn't come out and say it, but it sounds to me like, you know, you're leaning towards a recommendation of not going forward with the event. Would that be a fair assessment?
That would be correct, Council President Pecoraro.
Thank you. So, we've heard, you know, the report and the recommendation from staff on this event. It's another, perhaps sad casualty of, you know, of the pandemic, but nonetheless, we have to make these difficult decisions. Does anybody have any thoughts on this, or is there a motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavaci?
So, what's the date of the event?
The Saturday after Thanksgiving, I believe the date is the 28th.
That's pretty imminent.
So, it's a month from now?
No. Two weeks, really.
I thought you said the 8th.
No, it's literally two weeks, I think.
Well.
It's the Saturday after Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving is the 26th, right? So, it's the 28th.
Right.
Two and a half, yeah, two and a half weeks.
28th.
Yeah, two and a half.
I'm sorry, I thought you said the 8th, not the 28th. It's broken up a little bit. So, Ms. Gruber, when you're saying that you've got to do additional work from the staff perspective, you're talking about to put up displays and things like that?
Correct. We would be creating, building additional holiday displays, as well as illuminating trees and other vegetation along the trail.
My opinion, I think that, without doubt, it'll be hugely attended. I don't care what Facebook says. You guys know my feeling on Facebook to start with, but I think that, if we do it, I think we will have hundreds of people, hundreds of cars, that will want to drive through and view the event, without a doubt. So, from that perspective, I'm not worried about not, or having it, that it will be a flop. I think it'll be a huge success. And to your point, you said you had, I don't know, 80 people or something for the scarecrow thing, and you had hundreds show up for it. The Halloween thing, I mean, believe me, I live right here, I know what that turned out to be. It was a hell of a lot more people than whatever Facebook said was going to happen. So, I have zero doubt that it will be well-attended. And I just think that people probably aren't really thinking about a lot of Christmas stuff quite yet, but they're getting in that direction. That being said, you know, I don't know what you mean by the potential restrictions causing the organizations not being able to do it. Can you tell me what that, what does that look like? What does that mean?
So, Baltimore City and Baltimore County have already enacted stricter restrictions as far as gatherings, and so, for instance, I believe Baltimore County or Baltimore City, I'm not sure which one, has moved to shut all restaurants down that serve alcohol-only, don't serve food. So, we just see some movement going towards jurisdictions on their own tightening restrictions in response to the rising cases of COVID-19. And so, we are, I guess, cautious that perhaps Governor Hogan will follow suit and enact statewide restrictions that could eliminate our ability to actually hold this event.
What would eliminate that ability? These people are in cars. I mean, they're not, they're not gathering anywhere, they're driving past something. Are we talking about the participants on the floats?
Well, so, that's a factor if there is, you know, restrictions that go into place where nonprofits are no longer allowed to meet, then a lot of the nonprofit organizations are the people that have signed up to put entries in the reverse parade, so they wouldn't be able to be there, they wouldn't be able to bring their float out, so we are concerned about that. Additionally, right now, the group gathering limit is at 250 people. Now, of course, that would be participants, and we will be strung out along a mile and a half of trail, so we don't feel like we're violating the group gathering rule. However, if we remember back to the earlier time during the onset of the pandemic, where you weren't even allowed to be out traveling in your car unless you were going to the grocery store, or a doctor's appointment, it was locked down to essential travel only. I don't predict that happening around Thanksgiving, the busiest travel day of the year, but certainly, those are all items that we never used to have to consider, and certainly now are always on the forefront of our mind when we're planning or going into an event.
Okay. Thank you. Are we going to discuss it, or what are we going to do?
Ms. Gruber, can I, Mr. President, may I ask a question?
You may.
Ms. Gruber, have you kind of chatted with Mr. Singer from the Health Department as to what his prediction is, or the direction Carroll County's going?
I have not. All of our discussions to date have been internal. We've had a multitude of discussions between the Streets Department and the Recreation Department, and we've had two meetings to discuss everybody's thoughts and ideas on this particular event.
I, I mean, I understand that Baltimore City and Baltimore County are moving in a different direction. I don't believe Carroll is going into that extreme of a direction, so I was, I'm thinking maybe just a brief conversation with him to get his viewpoint would be beneficial for a decision. That's because, honestly, it's, it is people in cars driving by. We could even probably stagger the displays and the nonprofits in such a fashion that would limit the amount of people and their proximity to other people, to cut down the amount of closeness to one another, and the chance of any transmission of anything, along with mask-wearing.
There's plenty of space.
President?
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
So, I mean, I think, I think Mr. Singer is going to err on the side of caution on this. I mean, I can't speak for him, we can talk to him, but that'd obviously be after this meeting, where we can make an easy decision. My, I guess, I guess my gut says, since I don't have a vote, I guess I'll just speak my piece now. I think that I've never known Ms. Gruber to want to cancel anything. This is the first time. In fact, I don't know, I try to read her face when we cancel things, and I don't know if she's always happy with us. So, I think, I don't know, you know, when one of our directors rarely, rarely does something, and this, like, this case, I just, I think I have to defer to her judgment. That's my opinion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Ms. Gruber, one of the things, I have a question. You mentioned that, you know, because of the decreased number of floats, displays, you know, whatever, that you have, that you'd have to go out and, you know, create some yourself, that sounds to me like, you know, over the next couple of weeks, that's a fair amount of staff time and significant expense as well. Have you given any thought to what that would entail?
We understand that it would consume the majority of our staff time and a fair amount of time from the Streets Department. We certainly, when we're talking about illuminating the trail, we're going to need use of the bucket truck, and we're going to need the assistance of the Streets Department to make these substantial light displays occur. In addition to that, we're not sitting on top of thousands and thousands of Christmas lights, so there would be an investment in holiday decorations that would need to be purchased, and judging, and we mapped and laid out all of the floats and displays that we have, and a rough estimate of cost that I think we would expend to adequately illuminate the trail would be between $2,000 and $3,000.
Thank you. Any other comments from anybody who hasn't been heard from yet? Okay, well, I would just say, I'm inclined to agree with the mayor. I don't know that we need a motion or a voter on this, but I haven't, I don't know that we've got a, that we've got a common view on this yet either, so if, you know, the staff recommendation is to cancel the event, I'd just like to get a sense of the council, all those who agree with the staff recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Biggestly, aye.
Right? Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, so that's two and two, and I will vote to accept the staff recommendation. And so, there you go. Ms. Gruber, it's a sad, it was a good idea, and I'm sorry that it's not working out, but, you know, I think that it's a wise move to go ahead and try and think of something else we can do that's festive for the holidays. Thank you very much. Ms. Matthews, anything else on the COVID report?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. Move on now to next item, which is reports from standing committees. Mr. Dayhoff, anything you'd like to share from the Arts Council?
No, we're good. No reports, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Economic and Community Development Committee, Mr. Yingling?
No report this evening, thank you.
No report this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have nothing from the Finance Committee. Ms. Gilbert, anything from the Personnel Committee?
No, nothing from me. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Kavachi, Public Safety?
The chief will have a few things to go over, some good stuff. Just on, 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 on the general overall picture, things are still very quiet. We did have, of course, the, the one homicide a few weeks ago, which is incredibly unfortunate. I know they're working hard on that. But outside of that, that one incident, things still remain ve- very quiet, which is a, which is a good thing, Mr. President. That's it.
Right? You're absolutely right. It was a good thing. Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Public Works, Mr. Yingling.
Uh, yeah, just one thing quickly. Ms. Matthews and I have been working, I've talked to all of you about it, together of some amendments to our strategic plan to include kind of some clear, you know, steps to be taken with regards to sewer capacity. So she actually, I think, sent me an email last week. Didn't have a chance to really look at it. I've been out of town. But I, I'm going to be looking at it for the next two weeks, and then hopefully we'd like to, with obviously the council presidents, you know, last seen, bring it before the council. So that's all, Mr. President.
Absolutely. We'll look forward to doing that, Mr. Yingling. And Recreation and Parks, Mr. Dayhoff.
No report.
Right, thank you. Just from the new Technology Committee and Ms. Viskoski, you can start adding that to the agenda. I forgot to mention that to you the other day. We are having our first meeting on Friday morning to begin organizing the committee and starting to take a look at, you know, the, the city's technology needs, and we'll look forward to reporting back on that at the next meeting. And now we'll take up any other items that council members would care to raise. We will just go down the list in order. Mr. Kavachi, anything else you'd like to share?
Uh, no, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dayhoff.
No report.
Thank you. Ms. Gilbert? You're still muted, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I do not have anything.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Yingling.
Nothing this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We have one bid on the agenda tonight for the purchase of a slope mower. Mr. Glass.
Yes, sir. The 2021 General Fund Budget includes funding to purchase a radio-controlled slope mower. And this equipment will be primarily used to mow steep slopes of the stormwater management facilities, many of which we have. The equipment is radio-controlled and offers a considerably safer work environment for city staff. In this case, the operator is able to maintain a distance from the actual mowing, is therefore not subject to equipment rollover as we've had, sadly to say, more than one time in the past. We re- we issued the request for bids on October 6th, and they were due on the 28th. We had two responses. One was from McGrew Enterprises Doing Businesses Crownstone Equipment, and their bid price was fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. The second was Bobcat of Newcastle LLC, and their bid price was sixty thousand dollars even. So we have reviewed and evaluated the bid from McGrew Enterprises in the total amount of fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty, and we find it acceptable to meet the city's needs. The project funding, the budget amount for this was sixty thousand dollars, so we just came in under that, but certainly have enough money for it. And at this point, the staff would recommend that the mayor and council accept the bid of McGrew Enterprises Doing Businesses Crownstone Equipment. And they're in, on Frederick Street in Hanover, Pennsylvania, in the amount of fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for the purchase of a radio-controlled slope mower. Now, I'll answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Glass. Do we have a motion or, so we can proceed?
I'll make a motion that we accept the, the drone mower.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. There's a motion from Mr. Dayhoff and a second from Ms. Gilbert. Any questions to Mr. Glass or any comments?
My comment would be, Mr. President, if we could, can we, can we put an amendment to the bid in that it's a requirement that council members are allowed to be trained and utilize a slope mower occasionally at will?
Mr. President, I accept the amendment.
I, I think, I think we'll just take it that, you know, council members are welcome to visit under supervision of Mr. Glass or his designees, and we'll leave it at that, because I'm not sure I trust you guys with that.
Fair enough.
I'm just wondering what happened to the goats, Mr. Glass. They're not doing it anymore?
Uh, so we never did use those for the, for the stormwater ponds because they were in such remote locations and there are other reasons, but so we never used them at the storm.
All right, fair enough. All right, is there any further discussion on this?
Mr. President, I have, I have a question, not in light of, of, of Councilman Kavachi's remarks, but do you need a, I, I'm, I'm just really serious. Do you need a special, like, training for this, or is this kind of like going out with a drone and just kind of trying it? Or do our operators actually need to, like, be trained to operate this very expensive piece of equipment?
So there will be training involved, but it will be followed very closely to the commands of a PlayStation 5. So if you're good with that, you're going to be good to cut some grass then too, and you're welcome to take a turn.
I have to say, I'm going to enjoy coming out to watching this. This sounds very entertaining.
Right? I'm just looking forward to when Mr. Glass asks for a drone.
I always, I always get in trouble if I ask if it has a cup holder or not.
Any further discussion on this? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of accepting the bid, please say aye.
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 Those who say nay, the ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the bid is accepted. There you go, Mr. Glass. You may have your slope mower.
Thank you, sir.
Ordinances and resolutions. We have three items tonight. The first is for adoption, ordinance number 927, and ordinance amending chapter 164 zoning of the Code of the City of Westminster, Article 9A Historic District Zone, Section 164 dash fifty-three point, fifty-one point three, excuse me, creation and composition of Historic District Commission, appointment in terms of members, vacancies, alter the terms and composition of the Historic District Commission, and to modify its powers. Mr. Depot.
Thank you. Again, this is just a follow-up of the previous discussion for this ordinance, and I believe Ms. Levin sent out language to the mayor and common council regarding the commercial state leaseholder issue. And that would be that adding a new statement or sentence for purposes of this section, the term "commercial leaseholder" shall include a person who is a majority stakeholder of a corporate entity leasing space within the city. So the hope that, that would address both the mayor and council member Kavachi's concerns.
Okay, sounds like it works for me. May I have a motion to amend?
Motion to amend.
All right, there's been a motion to amend, you know, to include this language by Mr. Dayhoff and a second by Mr. Kavachi. Any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
Would there be any thought to maybe showing the, the sentence for the public, or, or are you okay with, I mean?
Well, I am not sure that anybody has it on the screen that is able to do that.
Maybe, maybe Shannon can just pop it up, or, I'm sorry.
Are we able, somebody able to do that?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have it right here.
All right, go ahead. If you can share it, that'd be great.
Yeah, I have the email from Ms. Levin. So it says, "For purposes of this section, the term 'commercial leaseholder' shall include a person who is majority, who is a majority shareholder in a corporation or a corporate entity." I'm going to start over. I, I want, I want to make sure everyone hears this correctly. For purposes of this section, the term "commercial leaseholder" shall include a person who is a majority shareholder in a corporate entity leasing space within the city. So they have to own at least fifty plus percent.
I think, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what Mr. Dayhoff was asking, if it could actually be put up on the screen so people could see it. I think only Ms. Viskoski is able to do that.
I can send it to her real quick. I didn't, unfortunately. I apologize.
If you could forward that to her, Ms. Viskoski, if you were able to put, share your screen and put that up for a moment, that would be great.
I can do that.
Sorry, Shannon.
That's okay.
While we're waiting for that, is there any further discussion on the amendment?
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
I wanted to thank Mr. Gray and Mr. Depot for their work on this. The Historic District Commission is pretty important, and I appreciate the refinement. And we'll see how it works. I mean, if it doesn't work, we can always change it again. But, but I, I, I appreciate the, the adjustments and the refinements. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. And I would say I agree with that, and also that I think it's maybe time to start thinking about, you know, giving them a little bit more of a role in trying to help ensure, you know, the historic look of our downtown, and we need to think about a way to do that that isn't going to, it caused too much trouble with our property owners. So I think that's worth having a discussion about as well. Are we able to share the screen yet? You'll, you'll go ahead. Go ahead and do it when you're ready.
Can you see that?
Yep.
Is that correct?
Okay, there it is, right there. I can see the language in caps there, about two-thirds of the way down. So now you can see it. You've heard it a couple of times. There being no more discussion. I'll put the question. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 All right, those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the amendment is adopted.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll now return to discussion of the ordinance itself. All those, or is there any further discussion on the ordinance itself? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of adopting ordinance number 927, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay, the ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Again, thanks to the staff and the Historic District Commission for good work on this. We appreciate it. And we'll look forward to seeing these changes put into place.
Thank you.
Next, next ordinance on the agenda is ordinance number 928. This is also for adoption. An ordinance regarding, an ordinance amending chapter seven Boards and Commissions of the Code of the City of Westminster, Article 1 Recreation and Advisory Parks Board, to revise the composition and duties of that board, and that goes to Ms. Matthews.
Thank you, President Pecorero. In conjunction with the mayor and common council's efforts to reconstitute the advisory board, which has been enacted for a number of years, as you know, city staff, including the city attorney, reviewed the applicable section of the city code and are recommending certain changes to basically address outdated code provisions and to provide for the more efficient operation of the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board. A redline copy of the ordinance is included in your agenda packet, and Ms. Levin and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding the proposed changes.
All right, very good. Thank you. So let's start off by getting a motion for adoption. May I have a motion?
I make a motion for the adoption.
All right, thank you. There's been a motion to adopt ordinance 928, and a second by, I think, Mr. Kavachi. Was that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any, any discussion or any questions from Ms. Matthews?
Mr. President, I have a, a particular question. I guess this would be either to Ms. Matthews or Ms. Gruber or whomever. I noticed in the section, "The duties of the board shall be," and it's the fourth item, "work closely with the Department of Recreation and Parks and Planning, provide input to the Director of Recreation and Parks in connection with the development of annual budget requests." Why, I guess I have a question. Was this always part of, of their duties? Since it wasn't really an established board, why, why is this piece in there? And is that part of other responsibilities of other boards? This particular part is just concerning to me.
I, I would just suggest this is probably the only board or commission we have that directly is engaged with, with a department like that. You know, none of the others, you know, play a similar, similar role, so that may be the reason. I'm not sure if anybody can give you a better answer than that. Does anybody have a thought on that, Mr. Kavachi?
So I served on that parks board many, many years ago when it was very active under the previous Recreation and Parks Director. And he relied on that board to help come up with ideas for things. For instance, I remember a specific meeting where they were trying to decide on a playground for a park, and there were some different options and things to look at. So he came to the Rec and Parks Board and asked for our input. And part of that was, a, a part of that responsibility being on that board was weighing the financial cost of the different choices. And we were able to help proffer, you know, from the community's perspective, I, I think what, what we felt like the community would like to have and how that weighed against what the costs were for some of those things. And there were a number of, of times where there, there were discussions related to activities that Recs and Parks were going to take and how they may impact, you know, fiscally on the city. And the, 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 the board gave its opinion to the Director of Recreation and Parks and, and, and the, the de facto council member that, that was on the board at that time. And then those two individuals, we go back to the whole body, and we're able to talk about, hey, this is the, the input we got from the community. These folks are, are in essence speaking for the community, and this is what they'd like to see. So for, for me, I, I think that does play a part in, in a budget request. It doesn't mean we approve it. It just means that it gives, the more information I think we can get is the ultimate deciding body that comes from the community and, and members that are willing to give their time freely to have that input. I, I, I think I'm happy to have it. You know, and of course, that's going to be filtered through Ms. Gruber because obviously she's going to have to agree, her and her staff, with whatever that budget request may, may be. But it may give her, in, in some cases, backing to say, hey, this is what the community would like to see. And then in other cases, it may give her the ability to say, look, you know, this is what we were thinking, but the community doesn't seem like they're really down with it. So it maybe isn't a good idea to put that request in. So that's my perspective on that. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Councilman Kavachi. I, I read that, and I, I got, I, I guess I was getting the impression they were working with Ms. Gruber to create the budget. And I just did not feel very comfortable with other folks knowing salaries, et cetera, and things that should remain personal and confidential. So that was kind of where my question was going as to how much and to what degree our board members would work with Ms. Gruber on the budget.
May I?
Thank you. Ms. Levin?
So I just want to point out that what we were doing with that language actually was making the board somewhat less involved so that they didn't have that kind of information. So it previously said, work with the department in planning the budget. And so we sort of stepped that down a little bit to say they'll provide input to her and, and then she can do what she needs to as a staff person.
All right, thank you, Ms. Levin. Any other questions, comments, or discussion on this? All right, thank you. So hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of, this is, again, this is for adoption. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance, please say aye.
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 Say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it, and the ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. And we'll now turn to our final one, which is for introduction of ordinance number 929. You'll recall that some months ago, we brought a draft ordinance to your attention that we promptly sent off to the State Ethics Commission to ensure that it was going to meet the requirements in their view of the state law. Since that time, we've gotten their comments back, and, you know, with their, their approval, it was also considered by the city's Ethics Commission, and they've made some recommendations to us. And so what we have here tonight is a revised version of the original ordinance, draft ordinance, that incorporates the, the thoughts of the Ethics Commission and our council in making the ordinance perhaps a little bit more practical, you know, than the original intention was. And so I'll turn to Ms. Levin now for an explanation of that.
So you will see that in the draft that's before you, there is quite a bit of text in small caps and underlined, and that is text that is being added to your previous. and that is text that is being added to your previous adopted ethics ordinance. In most respects, these additions are intended to bring you into compliance with the state's view of what you needed to have as an ethics ordinance. Of course, it was the position of the previous councils that, in fact, the ordinance that you had did comply with state law, but we had a disagreement with the state Ethics Commission about that. So this ordinance was designed to make those changes to the provisions that we've essentially been at odds with the state over for about 10 years. It does make, this council, following our discussions over the last year, was in a different mode with respect to the ethics ordinance and asked for certain additional provisions in here that, in fact, make your ordinance a little bit more strict than the state model. So I'm going to highlight a couple of those. In the definition of doing business with the city, which is on page 73 of your packet, we've included in that definition entities that have requested or received a grant of city-controlled funds in the amount equal to or exceeding 5% of their operating budget. So that's a pretty substantial grant to them. Then if you scroll down, that first edition, Conflicts of Interest About Regulated Lobbyists, that comes from a new state law that was not even in effect at the time we previously adopted an ordinance. So that's new in the last couple of sessions of the General Assembly. But that section, it's on page 74 of your packet, under subsection B, that is a prohibition on employment and financial interests. It says, "An official employee may not perform compensated work for or provide compensated services to any entity that has a contract with the city with respect to that contract." And this prohibition also applies to a qualified relative of a covered official or employee. And that is intended to make sure that money isn't flowing through an entity to another person who would not be able to do that directly. The rest of the changes on that page, including the changes to use of, the definition of use of prestige of office are made to comply with the new state model. And then if you go down to section 16-5 on page 75, some of those changes were to the dates, the filing deadline dates, to bring all of the filing dates throughout the ordinance to make them consistent with one another. We had different dates for when employees, the covered employees were supposed to file their disclosures and when the elected officials and candidates were supposed to file. So we made it February 15. You can obviously change that date, but we wanted to give people enough time after the start of the year because it's the previous calendar year for which they're filing, to get their statements in, so that they can be reviewed. In subsection B, you'll see that we changed certificate of nomination to declaration of candidacy. And that's simply to comply with what actually happens in the city. You don't have nominations. You just file declarations, so. The changes on page 76 are to bring you into compliance with this new state model. And all of the new language on 77 and 78 accomplish the same thing, including on page 79, with respect to regulated lobbyists. And I'm imagining that that provision about disclosing the identity of an entity that's engaged, an individual spouse, was most likely in response to a specific incident that must have happened in a jurisdiction where that was not disclosed. In section 16-6, we've changed the list of persons who need to file, of key employees who need to file disclosure statements. That list had not been altered in quite some time, and you have additional staff who logically ought to be filing some new department heads, et cetera. And I want to point out here that we took out members of boards and committees from this financial disclosure provision, and we gave them their own new section, which you will see down in 16-6.1. And the reason was that we were proposing, based on some comments that members of the council had made during our discussions, and in some instances that staff became aware of during the process of writing this revision. So we wanted to make disclosures by these key employees more robust. And you'll see that we did that in subsection C. We've added sections, subsections 3 through 6, and those are new. E and F are changes to comply with the model. And then 16-6.1 looks like a whole slew of new language, but it's actually just creating a new subsection for members of boards and commissions, but requiring the same short-form disclosure that they always signed, which just makes them disclose gifts that they received and anything else they think they ought to disclose. Throughout this ordinance, there are provisions that protect the home addresses of filers, because the filing statements are public records and can be requested. So you'll see at the very end, that's new language also.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Levand. This was a matter of some interest. I know that the mayor and Mr. Yingling had a lot of interest in seeing the city come into compliance. I would thank Mr. Cavaci for working with me to get the original draft of the ordinance going. You know, is, so I think we've got now a better product after it's gone through reviews at the state level, as well as by our own Ethics Commission and our council as well, legal council as well. So at this time, we should get it introduced. May I have a motion for introduction?
I'll move, Mr. President, to introduce it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Is there a second? A second from Mr. Yingling. Any questions from Ms. Levand, or any discussion on the ordinance?
Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Levand, go first.
I just wanted to say that the minor changes that I've made since we got it back from the Ethics Commission would not affect, in my view, the Ethics Commission's approval, because they are two provisions that weren't required in the first place. So I can assure you with some confidence that there will not be a problem with the state Ethics Commission.
Very good. I'm sorry, Mr. Cavaci.
Yeah, Mr. President, I guess my only comment was going to be that, you know, I think that there's, without a shadow of a doubt, that we put something together here, actually, that the state Ethics Commission and our own commission both came back and said, geez, you almost went too far with some things in terms of some requirements, and maybe dial it back just a little bit on a couple, because it might actually make it more challenging for some folks. So I think that, I think we've got a, you know, an ordinance here that there's just no question that it's beyond reproach in terms of the amount of information and the requirements that are in here, being, you know, requiring us all, elected and senior staff, to meet a pretty high bar to comply with this.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote, and this is for introduction. We're introducing, we're not adopting this tonight. We're just introducing this tonight. So this is just for introduction. All those in favor of the introduction of, I forgot the ordinance, ordinance number 929, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The Chair, the ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it. The ordinance is introduced, and we will schedule it at a future meeting for a public hearing and adoption. Thank you very much. And now we will move on to, move on to new, well, let's see. There's, next item is unfinished business. There is no unfinished business, of which I am aware. So we will move on to new business. First item is approval of Warner Construction Contract Change Order Number 16. Ms. Matthews.
Ms. Carrero, change order number 16 consists of two items, and I'll describe those briefly. One is to provide for an additional section of glass railing along the second store landing of stair number two. This section of the building originally had storefront frames and glass, which were removed during demolition. There was an oversight in the project design, which did not call for new railing. So this is to correct that oversight. The second item is both ceiling, as well as painting, this certain of the spandrel panels. We observed that sealant along the sills of several of the spanels, panel, I'm sorry, spandrel panels were leaking into some of the offices. This work provides for Warner Construction to remove and replace the failing sealant at these panels. And I would note, because there's been some past discussion of this by the mayor and common council, all the storefront frames in question would be painted with metallic aluminum paint that would match the standing seam metal canopies. You may remember, a number of months ago, we had some discussion about possibly replacing those storefront frames at a cost of about $60,000, which the mayor and common council understandably rejected. So this would allow a little bit more of a cohesive look in terms of the appearance of the building, as well as, most importantly, dealing with the leaking panels. The two work items that I've just described have a combined cost of $11,593.20. And I would note that change order number 16 will not change the contract time for completion. I'd be happy to answer any questions, Council President Peckerraro.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Let's get a motion, just so we can deal with this appropriately. I have a motion to approve Warner Construction Contract Change Order Number 16.
I'll move to approve, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. But a motion by Mr. Cavaci, and a second from Mr. Yingling. Any questions for Ms. Matthews, or any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. DeHaas.
Do we have an opinion from the Public Works Director about this?
We can find out. Mr. Glass, have you got any thoughts on this?
So I think it's two items that need to be done. I think that, I think the first, as Ms. Matthews enumerated, was an oversight by the architect, and I think the issue of painting the storefront frames and it's really not a reglazing, but it's a sealing of the, of those panels. I think that needs to be done to prevent weather intrusion as well. So I would say it has to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Any further questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, we will move on to a vote. All those in favor of approving Warner Construction Change Order Number 16, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the change order is approved. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Matthews. And the next item is, next item is discussion of a proposed Warner Construction Contract Change Order Number 17. Ms. Matthews.
I'm actually going to ask Mr. Glass to present this item, because his knowledge of HVAC systems is certainly much more extensive than mine.
Thank you, Mr. Glass.
Yes, sir. The question at hand relates to a HVAC unit that I think was initially thought that would last some period of time after a review by the consultant from the architect's office. And then since that time, I think that opinion has probably changed. The unit is, operates on an older refrigerant called R22 that, as of, and I'll get the date wrong, it was either last January or July. You can't get that refrigerant anymore commercially, other than if it's reclaimed or recycled. So it's being phased out, and I don't think it's the issue that the unit doesn't work any longer. The question is how much longer it's going to work, and is this the right time to replace it as well? The memo refers to the condenser. This is actually a split unit, so it would be both halves. It would be the indoor air handler, as well as the condenser and compressor for this amount of $20,878, $20,878.20. And it appears that would change your contract time for completion by four calendar days as well. This unit handles the conditioning needs for the seminar room in 018 in the lowest level.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Glass, for that explanation. May I have, so, Ms. Matthews, what are you looking for here?
This is an item that the mayor and common council wish to pursue. You know, we're about less than 60 days from project completion, so there is some time sensitivity to this item, if it's something that the mayor and common council want to consider.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavaci.
So I'm more familiar with the R12, so R135, the automobile version of this conversion that took place than I am the home or commercial air conditioning units. But, you know, I'm not going to say I'm an expert, but I know enough about this that a system that's running on the older refrigerant in and of itself does not constitute a reason to change it. So when, if and when that system leaks, which it's not supposed to ever do, but if it does leak, and the refrigerant does need to be, you know, filled up or topped off, typically, number one, you've got another problem that you've got to deal with, because these are closed systems that don't leak that refrigerant. And number two, if and when we have to top it off at some future time, and we can't do it, well, that's the time to replace it. I see no reason to spend $20,000 and put this project four more days behind schedule just because it's using an older refrigerant, because you don't have to just change the outside. You've got to change the A coil inside as well. And both of those things are common replacements and things that are commonly done in buildings. And I don't, unless I'm way off base here, I don't see that we're saving a ton of money doing that right now, as opposed to doing it five years from now, or 10 years from now, when that system finally does fail. I, from what I understand, I don't think the juice is worth the squeeze here to spend this money just because it's running on R22. And I'd say we shouldn't do it, and we ought to just move on. And if the thing breaks in a year or two, well, then it breaks in a year or two and replace it. But we may get 10 more years out of it. We just don't know. And that's a gamble you take all the time with these kinds of systems. But not, but again, this isn't a heating system that's going to, you know, put us out of business in the entire building and force people to not be able to come to work if it does go down. It breaks, it's going to be a little warm for a while. You get the new unit in, and you get it done. That's my, that's my opinion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Is there any further discussion?
It may be worth noting as well, to follow up on Councilman Cavaci's words there. The unit certainly worked at the time of inspection. So since that time, it's not been refired back up again, obviously, but it's very likely that it will refire again. I would assume so.
All right. Mr. Glass, my question would be, if we did replace it, and I know nothing about this, so I'm just, you know, trying to figure this out. Is a, I don't know, I imagine the system is, you know, got some years on it. Are there significant efficiencies in changing out to a newer system that, you know, create a, you know, cost savings over the next, you know, few years that we would be? there are cost savings over the next, you know, a few years that we would be operating it, to make up the cost of it.
So every unit that you replace is going to be more efficient than the one that you just replaced. So the SEER rating on this is probably going to be in the eleven or so range with the replacement will be fourteen, five or fifteen maybe. So it will be significantly more efficient. Likely not twenty thousand dollars worth over the, maybe over the lifetime of the next unit, but you know, you won't see that payback in just a few years. It won't work that way.
All right. Well, that's helpful to know. Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. President. Mr. Yingling.
And this is a time sensitive issue. I missed that one. Is that?
Well, yeah, because we've only got, we're about sixty days away from completion of the contract. This will add four days to the completion time. So we've got to decide now if we wanted to do it or else it'll be, we've got to move on and do other things. I gather that's the case.
I mean, I know nothing about refrigeration and mechanical systems. I mean, so, you know, I guess I kind of ask like the expert, Mr. Glass, I mean, you've given us the information, okay? Both sides of it. I mean, if you're doing this, I mean, you're the engineer. Would you do this?
So I would go back to the original recommendation from the architect where they originally thought the unit would probably last another four or five years. I believe that it would last another four or five years. I think in the event that it doesn't, you won't be out anything. You got to spend the money anyway. I think that my opinion is the difference would be and that's something that we could bid, we could certainly shop the cost, but we won't pay the contractor's overhead if we do that at a later time.
Okay, very good.
That being said, of course, it probably just malfunctioned and is not going to work than when we expect it to turn back on. So.
And we'd have to spend the money anyway.
There you go.
Okay, there you go.
Mr. President.
Yes.
So the areas that this this unit, you know, the climate controls in the areas, where is this where staff are full time or this is in rooms that are just used part time, right? So if for some, the other reason I asked is so if for some reason it doesn't fire back up, we don't have an immediate, we don't have an immediate problem. It's just there's a room that isn't always used. They can't be used for a little while, right? Or, I mean, it doesn't even can't be used. I guess it depends on how cold or hot it is. So, okay, I just wanted to, that's what I thought you said. I just wanted to make sure.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. So just from what I'm hearing here, it sounds as if there doesn't seem to be a lot of support for the idea of spending the money right now. And that, you know, there seems to be some sense of we're willing to take our chances. Is that the, is that the sense of the council?
Yeah, I suggest we hold off. That's my.
All right. So Ms. Matthews, I think that's that's the guidance from the council.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for bringing this to us. That was that one. And I think the next item, we'll go to Mr. Cavaci.
Okay, Mr. President. I'm going to make a motion to go into closed session immediately following this meeting under the Open Meetings Act, under statutory authority to close a session on the Maryland annotated general provisions, Article three dash three oh five B, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. And subsection three to consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose and matters directly related thereto. That's my motion, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second to Mr. Cavaci's motion to close the, hold a closed session?
Mr. President, I'm sorry. I apologize. There were two other subsections that we're closing under. I don't want to miss those. It's three oh five B, number three, update council concerning status of some key employees to discuss council needs and steps regarding key employees and to discuss pentra acquisition of structures that may be unsafe.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Is there a second? Okay.
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Gilbert. She unmuted first, so she'll get the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it and the ayes have it. And we will go into a closed session at the conclusion of our regular meeting. Now it's time for departmental reports. Ms. Matthews.
President Pecoraro, I'd like to give Councilmember Dayhoff the first shot at it to report for the Fire Department.
And there'll be no report this this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dayhoff. Ms. Colston.
Hi, thank you for for that, Council President and council. There'll be no report tonight from the Finance Department.
Thank you, Ms. Colston. Mr. Davidson.
Who's Mr. Davidson?
I'm not sure. I'll tell you what, I'll come back to him. Mr. Depot.
I had some technical issues. Just want to report that we had the.
Technology guy with technical issues?
Yeah, once in a while. We had our phone kickoff meeting, so we're going to start the phone upgrade, which hopefully could be completed by the end of the year just in time for the temporary wastewater move and the forty five move. So I have a report tonight. Any questions?
Mr. Depot.
Hello, everyone again. The border zoning appeals, last Tuesday, they did approve the distillery, the special exception application for the one sixteen, one eighteen East Main Street site. So they will be moving forward the site plan process and I'm just happy that they got approved and looking forward to that happening and opening downtown. The Planning Commission will have two items on this Thursday, and that is the Starbucks on along one forty, there was an ADA sidewalk that they're adding. And the Stone Gate subdivision is asking for an upward adjustment of eight additional single family detached dwelling units for this year. They already reached the thirty maximum permits allowed for twenty twenty, so that development is going strong and this just allows them eight more permits for this year. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Glass.
Yes, just a few things to report. We had, since the last council meeting, two water main breaks, believe it or not. Luckily enough, they were not at the same time. One was at the intersection or close to the intersection of Union Town and Bell Roads. The other one was at Middle Grove Court. So they were, kudos to the utilities department. They were quickly brought that under control and resumed normal service then. The last thing is just to remind, the roadway paving project is going to be provided to weather holds as, doesn't have to be as nice as it's been, but just reasonably well. They're going to begin on the sixteenth. It will be in the areas around the street department and the city police department as well. So that's all. Unless there are questions.
Ms. Gruber.
Yes, good evening. Since the last council meeting, the Recreation and Parks Department held a pre-bid meeting on October twenty seventh for design procurement and installation of playground equipment at Soho Farm Boulder Park. We had nine companies attend and bids are due on November eighteenth. We also concluded final reviews of proposals for the Durbin House Historic Structures Assessment. A big thank you to Mr. Depot for allowing Ms. Gerhard the ability to help with the review process. Her input was incredibly valuable and greatly appreciated. Recommendation is being prepared for the next council meeting. An update on our shower room renovation project. I am happy to report that electrical plumbing and framing inspections were all successfully completed as of today and tomorrow we will begin with the hanging up drywall and cement board. The project is on schedule and moving along as planned. So that is fantastic news. Today, we met with RG Pool Consulting at the community pool. We were discussing preparations of bid specifications for the pool renovations. And we are hoping to make a fair amount of progress on those bid specifications this week. Lastly, preliminary work is progressing on the Wakefield Valley Master Plan process, and I am certainly looking forward to the special meeting of the mayor and common council to discuss that project further tomorrow evening. That concludes my report unless there are additional questions.
Chief Ledwell.
Yes, good evening, everyone. So our detectives are continuing to investigate the homicide of Mr. Rainey. I'm not going to go into any details at this time, other than say that we are continuing our investigation in collaboration with the state's attorney's office. And we encourage anyone who may have witnessed the incident to contact us, please. Our information is on the city's website and information can be provided anonymously. We are planning our annual holiday patrols in conjunction with our grant funded impaired driving patrols currently. We filled a vacancy in our communications division. Ms. Sarah Billington starts with us on November the twenty fourth. We also made a job offer to Richard Gibson to fill the major position. He's scheduled to start with us on December the eighth. He will be retiring as the Northern District Commander with the Baltimore Police Department. Major Gibson is a resident of the city of Westminster here, and he's looking forward to policing the community in which he lives. I'm excited about getting him on board and I know he's very excited too. I think he'll be a great addition to the department. I will bring him in to introduce him in person once we get him hired. We are also collaborating currently with the Boys and Girls Club of Westminster. They received some grant funds through the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention. And we provided a letter of support to have a collaboration between the children there and the police department. So we're excited about working with the Boys and Girls Club. We also are in the process of the bid process with the cameras. And we had a number of vendors who attended our pre-bid meeting. We had four vendors who submitted proposals and they're scheduled to do some demos for us this week. So we're excited to proceed forward with that. And that's all that I have. Unless there are any questions.
If there's no questions, I believe that concludes staff's reports tonight. Council President Pecoraro.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Matthews. The final item on our agenda is citizen comments. When we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues that pertain to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. It's difficult to allow live comments online during these meetings and we'll continue to host these virtual meetings until we can return to in-person meetings. In the meantime, we invite comments to be sent to our city clerk at comments@westgov.com. At this time in every meeting, I will read out all of the comments we have received. The city clerk has advised me that we have received no comments since our last meeting, and so I have nothing to share with you this evening. And that concludes our agenda and the meeting. That objection will be adjourned. I know we have a special meeting tomorrow evening at seven PM. And our next regular meeting will be on November twenty third. Thank you all. Stay safe and have a good evening. Take care.